Welcome to our September work meeting. And I'm going to call this meeting to order. And I'm going to begin by asking Ms. Anaya to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Thursday, January 14, 2021, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Acreboro Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Acreboro Township clerk and posed it on a bulletin board in township hall.
Thank you. May we have roll call?
Ms. Alabarda? Here. Mrs. Byrd?
President.
Mr. Delabarga?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here. Here. Here?
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano?
No. Here.
Excuse me, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd is here. Sorry about that. Had you absent earlier. Thank you.
That's okay. Here.
Okay, we're all going to stand and salute the flag, following which I'm going to ask all of you to join me in a moment of silence. We have lost three current and former bus drivers, Roberta Bergeron, Maureen Milton, and Richard Edwards.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So again, welcome. Thank you for coming out to our September work meeting. So welcome back, EHT. I want to start again, as I do very often, I want to thank our administration, I want to thank our teachers, and I want to thank our staff, all of our staff. For the first time in two years, we are back 100% in person and full-time. And it took a lot to get there. It took a lot of work. It took a lot of work and dedication for that to happen. We know there were issues. We know there are issues associated with doing something we haven't done in two years. Some circumstances have changed, and that made it more difficult. And you'll be hearing tonight measures we've taken to mitigate and make things better and get us back on track. But again, the most important thing is we are back. So welcome back, EHT. Thank you all again, and I'm going to turn the microphone over to our superintendent, Dr. Grugio.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our work session. It's great to be back. I welcome everybody back, and I have to say how happy I am and how nice it feels to have everyone back full-time, in-person in our schools. We are aware that we've had some blips here and there with this opening, but overall, it's been a great opening. We've addressed concerns or in the process of addressing some concerns, and I'll share some information with you tonight. I even have a visual for you. But I'm going to provide some facts to our school community and our Board of Education. Masks are to be worn in our schools for our students and staff as per Executive Order 251. Yes, there are mask exemptions in that executive order, and all that are stated are adhered to by us. We have provided desk shields in our classrooms as per the Road Forward. Where stated in the Road Forward that structural interventions can be put in place when needed. And in our case, when there's more than 20 students and three feet of social distance cannot occur in a classroom. Last year, this time, we were challenged as to why we didn't have desk shields, and they would help open our schools. Well, here we are, a year later, we have desk shields, and we are proud, and we are opening our school with all our students back. They are assisting us when we cannot social distance, and they also act as another protective layer against COVID-19. And these answers, questions that parents had who were concerned about sending their students back in the building, so that extra layer assured them that we are working to keep our schools safe, keep our students healthy, and our buildings open. We've heard some, also heard from some of our teachers, and we listened to our teachers, you know, after we opened up, some requested desk shields, just as they requested other PPE devices, and those requests were fulfilled. Last year, we were able to remove masks behind desk shields, and you know, that seemed logical, but at this time, we cannot. But just think, when we can, and hopefully we move into that ability to do that, we feel prepared because we have desk shields in place. We also have table shields in our cafeteria tables, and students can remove their masks here to eat, and this is part of the Road Forward guidance that we are following. And perhaps that could be confusing for some, perhaps that's because maybe during lunch, first of all, they have to eat and remove their mask, and some don't, some do this, and that's up to them. But you know, our students are in the cafeteria much, much shorter time than they are with each other in the classrooms. Overloaded buses. Some of you received a phone call from transportation, and they advised you that we are looking to implement, or we are implementing, a more efficient pickup and drop-off in one neighborhood in particular. There were five bus routes, five buses, that were going into that neighborhood, so we had to adjust, and were able to put two Acreboro Township school buses solely for that neighborhood. I want to make it clear, and I want to clarify, that there were not 70 students assigned to one bus, okay? We received a report that there were also multiple students sitting in one seat. We addressed that. There happened to be a substitute bus driver that day, didn't follow the seating chart, but that was addressed. And simply, we are looking to be efficient and effective in all that we do. Regarding other school districts, I sit here as superintendent of the Acreboro Township School District. I collaborate with my colleagues in Alanta County, and especially with one superintendent in particular, and I've been assured that all students and staff are to wear masks in the public schools in Alanta County. Can students in those districts take their masks off behind desk shields? Absolutely not. All my colleagues are following the Road Forward and the executive order and the guidance that guides us as superintendents of schools. So I hope that this clarifies any misinformation. Water-filling stations. Yes, I want to make it clear that our pandemic team meetings had discussions about the health, safety, and welfare of our students and staff regarding multiple areas, and water-filling stations and water fountains were a discussion. And I also shared in my plan at our town hall meeting that we held in August, as well as information on the website, and at every board meeting since, that we have a health and safety plan in place, and we have pandemic teams in place. Pandemic teams are consensus of stakeholders who collaborate and discuss certain issues regarding the road forward. We were informed that one of our water stations was open, and that was unbeknownst to us. Aside from this incident, we also heard that there's a request from parents and from students for the water stations to be open. So today, because I received positive feedback, we got in touch with our school physician and asked his opinion about water fountains versus the filling stations. And he gave us guidance on water fountains where he does not recommend, and we still will, you know, agree with him on that, that water fountains can be havens for germs. But he did, we did talk about the water-filling stations, so his advice to us was that they're not as dangerous, if you will, for germ infestation, and recommended that if we would like to open the water-filling stations, that we, you know, would do so, and he would support that in terms of the health, safety, and welfare of students. So we anticipate by the end of this week that they will be open throughout our schools, and also know that there are cases of water available for our students who would like to have water and not use a water station, or maybe their own water bottles have ran out of water. I know in fact that this building has a case of water in every classroom. Lastly, drop-off and pickup at Swift Sleigh Ball. We are aware of the traffic backup, to the point where my whole central office staff has been out on the corners, on the sidewalks. We also got, I also got in touch with the Acreboro Township Police Department. The chief's been here two or three days, along with Sergeant Graham, and they've evaluated the situation. We've met with the principals, with transportation, with facilities director, and we discussed our situation. And while it's gotten a little better, we still need a plan to improve it. And as I shared with the board members in committee settings, that Mr. Brunetta has worked on a plan and submitted that plan. So we actually get that up on the... So I'd like to show the Board of Education and the public the plan that we're going to review with the Swift Sleigh Ball leadership team tomorrow. We met with Mrs. Wazin today and shared this plan with her. Jamie, I'll need the light probably dimmed. I also have a meeting set up with the Acreboro Township administrator, township administrator, because this involves some assistance from the township. But I want you to show, I wanted you to know that we are aware, we have reacted, and we are in a planning process, and I'd like to get this project on its way as soon as possible to have the board's blessing in terms of what we're looking to do. All right, so Mr. Santilli, if you could be a fan of white, if you will, because I usually don't come down to work, so I have a...
Yeah, the red button.
What is that? Here?
Yes.
Is that here? There we go. All right, so if you can follow me. Where am I? Where am I? Steven, now hold this up, sir.
Pull your arms loose.
All right, so we're going to pull in here. What we're looking to do is put arrow markers on the road coming in. Okay, so this is the entrance of Swift Drive. Here's your Swift School, Sleigh Ball. I'm sorry. Why is it backwards? Can I do it this way? If you guys can see this. Right here. It's not upside down. So what we're looking to do is come in to the complex here. This is Ocean Heights. You're going to come in, and we're going to have road markers. We're going to have road markings and signs. So what we need to do, board, is we're looking to put a driveway in between the baseball field there and the playground, so that'll come in around Swift, all right? So we will have, be able to have parent drop-off and pickup in this area for this school. What we have to do now is move the playground from behind Swift over to that baseball area there, softball area. Go ahead, move to the right. This parking lot, which exists in front of Sleigh Ball, would be expanded to now be a bus parking lot. So what we're trying to create here is the bus drop-off and pickup for the buses to be in between the two schools, all right? So kids aren't, right now, what our buses are doing is they're picking up at the two schools, and then they're swapping, all right? And then they're leaving. That's why some folks are getting home a little later. So we are trying to resolve that situation, have a centerized bus lot so that both schools can be served, all right? What that does now is put parent drop-off and pickup to the back of the school, the back of Sleigh Ball. We have to break through this parking lot here, which is an existing parking lot for the Sleigh Ball primary staff and some of the Sleigh Ball elementary staff, and then by doing that, we have to create 53 more spaces here so that we can accommodate some of the parking that we're taking away in these two spots. So we feel that this will alleviate the problem. We met, like I said, with the PD today. They liked the plan, some of it was their ideas and their recommendations, as well as Mr. Brunetta, who drew this up for us. What we do know, we have to get permission from the township, is we have to, this is their property here, we have to expand this road, maybe about a foot here, but our property, we know that we can move the fences back and come in onto here, okay? So we'd like to get this moving as soon as we can. It involves a discussion with the township, and it involves a discussion with whoever we can bid this out to, okay? Any questions?
Just to confirm, it's a draft plan?
It is a draft plan.
While we go ahead and talk to individuals.
Yep.
Superintendent?
Sure.
I have a question. How soon are we looking at implementing this? What is the cost?
Right, that's what we're looking into now.
We don't know at this point.
We don't know, we don't know the cost. We have to have some discussions again with the township, what they can do, what they can't do, that would add to the cost.
Okay, so that's, in other words...
To alleviate you the cost.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
But I wanted to show you hot off the press, what we've been brainstorming about, and what we're looking to do to resolve the situation, the headache that I know parents are experiencing right now. And, you know, so I called for, like, what happened, particularly in the middle of the day, rainy day, you have, first day of school, parents excited, sorry, parents excited, you have the little kids, you know, that parents are walking in, taking pictures, whatever, you know, and then we have COVID, right? Some parents don't want their students on the buses, and I respect that. I understand that. Originally, when this district had, you know, opened up the second and third schools here, back before the situation we're in right now, you know, we made a firm stance, we're a busing district, take the bus, okay? But I'm not going to sit here and say that in the current situation that we are in, in a world pandemic. I understand. I'll sit here and say I understand. So to accommodate the overflow of traffic and parent drop-off and pickup, I think this is going to help alleviate the backup that we're having, if you will, particularly in the front there, when that Swift School drop-off, it takes, we call it the queuing area, the line of cars. Instead of being backed up on Ocean Heights Ave, we can pull them into our own property, and the cars could start lining up there. Yes?
So I am glad to see that there's, you know, a plan or a tentative plan, draft, in place. So I was just wondering, until, this plan seems extensive with construction and different things, and partnering with different, with the township and different things. So until, like, until that happens, right now, like, the, I guess, what's the plan, like, to alleviate some of it now? Do we have like a little, like a temporary one that we could repatter in the traffic or anything, or is it just going to...
Well, right now, we're doing the best we can with having security guards out there and directing traffic, and, you know, having parents understand when they're dropping off, dropping off on the passenger side, and the teacher's on the curb helping...
Students out, a car lane.
And then the car would drive, the parent would drive, you know, drive off, and the next parent would pull up. And that's going on now. It's happening quicker and quicker every day. But I just feel like we can accommodate more cars in a safer, you know, arena, if you will, by putting in those two roads. So one road is going to be, roadway, I should say, is going to be right there up front, between the baseball field and the playground, and then the next one will split the parking lot down at primary, at Sleigh Ball Primary.
And I know dropping off younger children is a lot more, is a lot more to dropping off a younger student at a school than it would be for older students getting on and off the buses, apart from the parent drop-off.
Right, and then at the primary, where the preschool is, the parents will have the opportunity to park like they do now and walk their students in, okay? Because that's what's going on now. It's a little different with the preschool.
So this is my question, so are the majority of parents parking and dropping off their, walking in their preschool student, or do we have a car, can we have a car lane for the preschool students to be dropped off?
I think we have, we have both. We have both.
Is it, yeah, both, okay.
Yeah. Mrs. Byrd?
Thank you. I appreciate the fact that you guys have been so reactive and have come up with a plan, very thorough plan, have discussed with the township, also police chief. So that's a wonderful job. I am alarmed at the scope of this solution, the costs that are going to be involved in this solution. When we, the problem is somewhat short-term right now. We're hoping that things do at some point go back to normal. So it almost seems like we're going to be putting a lot of district funds out to fix a problem that, God willing, is a temporary one. And secondly, in the future, if we redistrict, we're putting a lot of resources here to fix a parking flow issue that may not be an issue in the future at some point if we ever switch the schools around a little bit. But mostly, have we considered staggering drop-off times at these buildings so that, say, you know, let, you know, last names, A through G, you drop off between these times, G through this, you drop off, and spreading it out to, you know, help with the flow there? Have we come up with solutions that don't involve breaking ground right now?
We have explored many options, to the point where you can ask Mrs. Wazin. We tried one on Monday that didn't work, moving kids instead of buses. This complex has become second to the high school in terms of students in one spot. If anything, our preschool building is going to expand. So if I had to sit here and say strategic plan as I look three to five years out, I would predict that that preschool is going to expand, right? We're looking for more grant money, we're looking to grow that program. So there may be even addition put onto that building. Again, something we'll discuss in the strategic plan process. I think we have outgrown the parking lot at Sleigh Ball Primary Elementary, to the point where I don't like that parents have to park way down, and they're walking their little kids through, when there's people kind of pulling in to get to work or pulling out to go someplace. So I think this presents a safer outline for our community, for our schools. When I met with the chief of police, he even stated, he said, "I've been here long enough to know that there used to be one school here," right, the Swift School, "and one way in, one way out that worked at that time." And there used to be something that went through, a road that went through Veterans Memorials Park, that because when Castle Park was built, was shut down. So we don't have that one way, you know, in, in, and out anymore. And his overview of it was, you know, there really wasn't much thought about parking and pickup and drop-off as these buildings have been added. And he feels that, you know, we've updated, if you will, the complex and the facilities. So I understand your concern, and your points are, you know, well-taken in terms of the pricing. We're hoping some of this, we can help do ourselves, but that's something, again, this is hot off the press today. I received it today. But it's something that, you know, we'll take into consideration, the price, the process, and all that, and I will be in direct communication with you to let you know how we're progressing with this. And in the end, yes, you know, if we decide that, you know, we might want to hold off, you know, that's a decision that we have to live with. But I will tell you, it's hectic out there in the morning. So I'd like to make it clear-cut, particularly with the roadway markings and the signage, and just give people direct places to go and where they need to go. Question?
Ms. Alabarda, then Mr. Ireland.
So I'm a proud graduate of Sleigh Ball Middle School, but yeah, there was a lot less traffic back then. I am concerned, though, that we already have a lot of backup going on, and the construction would cause a lot more backup. So I'm not sure if that, this is something we really want to consider doing during the school year or holding off to do it maybe during the summer.
Mr. Ireland.
Dr. Grugio, you mentioned about safety on the, in front of Swift, possibly the shoulder in front of Swift, the asphalt to the grass area. Is there a way that we could fill that in with a little bit more dirt? So when I went to go pick up my son from school, I noticed that there was a couple cars parked, because they couldn't get to the grass area or to the shoulder of the road. So if you want to, I don't know, do you have a pointer? Yes. To the right.
To the right.
To the right. To the right. Keep going, keep going. Right there. So, so right there, a lot of cars were parking in the middle of the asphalt because they couldn't get further to the shoulder, because there was huge, like, craters? If possible, can we get with the township or us to fill in those little craters, just for the time being?
Right, and that's part of our meeting with the township, because we have that all along there. We were hoping we can get another foot, foot and a half, but again, that's a discussion we have to have with them to see...
Because that should be a quick fix.
Who's going to touch it, who's going to do it.
Yeah.
But thank you.
It'd be a quick fix.
Anyone else before I go back to Mrs. Byrd?
Thank you. I know the finance department had a discussion last month in August about pilot funds that the township collects on some redevelopment. This would be a great time to approach that on maybe getting some sidewalks built around our schools and using some of those pilot funds to, you know, share with the district because that would, that would help all of the taxpayers at the drop-off, and I think that that would be, this is a good time to approach that in our, as we work together to make things better.
Any other comment?
We good? Okay, I will keep you updated on that. And I just want to say, a reminder, there's a district newsletter that is put out every Monday, provides information not only from the district perspective, but at the very end, there's every school has a link to their district newsletter. Our website also provides informations, and I encourage you that if you have a question, that a direct email, first to a teacher, then to a principal, and to my office if need be, will get you factual information that you need to either relieve anxiety or bring clarity to your concern or your question. I do, again, make a statement that Facebook conversations will not provide you with factual information as to how the school district runs. So while I appreciate feedback, and I take it all day long, and it only makes us better at what we do, I encourage you to be, and stay positive, because it's very important to me and to the folks in the school district here and our climate and culture that we are positive, we are positive with our questions and our concerns, and we are here to help, okay? And we are here to clarify when we need to clarify. So I just want to make sure you make that statement, that we are communicating through our website. We will communicate through the parent portal, and we will communicate through the district newsletter. And with that, Mr. Castellano, that concludes my September work session superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Grugio, and our administration will be looking forward to more details on the plan, as well as our cost estimates, and then we can make an informed judgment going forward. But we appreciate the effort that's going into making, coming to school easier. All right, so we are going to move forward now into our discussion of finance and operations, and I'm going to ask for our committee report, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I think I have the mic. The Finance and Operations Committee met on September 9th of 2021 at 6:00 at this boardroom. And myself, Mr. Price, Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Solagi, Ms. Anaya, Mr. Santilli, and Dr. Grugio were in attendance. We discussed a couple of things, committee updates, transportation, the monthly update. It was all linked to the Google Drive, so you can follow along with that if you haven't already, board members. The committee spoke highly of the transportation department and the hard work and dedication of the drivers and staff. We discussed district charter, non-pub, special ed, parent contract data. There are currently eight runs that are being contracted for the district students, and there remains to be an ongoing effort of recruitment to bring those runs in-house, and this data will be reported monthly. Facilities, administration reported on ongoing projects, including the well closure and the Swift window bids. The high school ceiling, administration reported an update on the high school gym. The ceiling paint is chipping and causing debris that's falling, and we'll be looking for current pricing, and a recommendation will follow. And we'll be looking for current pricing and a recommendation will follow. So that, that's, if you're familiar with the gym, the ceiling is chipping. So that's something that has to be addressed. PPE update, personal protective equipment update. WB Mason agreed to cover the cost of our employees going to Michigan to pick up the cafeteria barriers, which were unable to be delivered due to the hurricane. So that was very nice and well put together and we got that accomplished. Thank, thank you very much to the administration for that. Food service, the district is currently accepting applications for free and reduced lunch. Although breakfast and lunch are free for all students this year, there are significant benefits eligible, for eligible families such as free SATs, AP testing, as well as P EBT funded cards and the school benefits and federal state funding to supplement our local budget. So that's something we need to be aware of. We discussed the district radios, the communications radios, data function charges. Mr. Santilli and Ms. Anaya discussed the history of the radio purchases, the purpose of the district-wide communication and how deployment and inventory of the radios are maintained. The committee discussed coverage and the purchase of additional radios that were added to our existing fleet. Additionally, the Atlantic County Attorney's Office has put the district on notice regarding, regarding a $20 monthly per radio fee that should have been assessed the past few years. The board solicitor and Ms. Anaya are currently meeting with the county to negotiate an agreement to reduce the charges. For those of you that don't know, our new radios with the interoperability and the, the coverage goes through the Atlantic County system, the P-25 network system, which is run by Atlantic County. Action items that were discussed, we're going to have some action items tonight. I'm sure Ms. Anaya will brief us on those. Copiers plus, high school lease, out of travel, district travel, parent contracts for student transportation. Then we have action items for next week as well that we'll discuss. We had donations, a donation of 17 boxes of books donated by Books-A-Million in May's Landing. Estimated value $7,815, Michael Sweeter, EHT School District. We also had a donation of 19 backpacks filled with school supplies donated by Civil Alabarda. Estimated value $300. And that's, Dr. Grucio could probably comment on that as well. We discussed purchases in accordance to policy 621, which is linked to your Google Drive. And there are projects to be presented on September 24th that were not discussed due to time. Partial roof at the high school, five fields at the high school. So that concludes my report. If there's any questions, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Anaya at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price, very good. To add to that report, the board received the agenda on Friday and had questions regarding some of the things we'll be taking on, on action for next week. And in the finance and ops area, there's a bill for payment on, for architect for the architectural and engineering assessment and work done to spec, to create specifications for the bid as we look to at least getting an actual cost for the five fields at the high school. So that work has been completed, the specs were done. We did do a bid, we had a bid opening. We are presenting that next week to the full board with more information. But that's the bills list item for the architect and engineer related fees. And that is the end of the questions for my area. Any questions on the actual report or anything else?
Any comments or questions on finance, board members? Mrs. Byrd.
Thank you. I have a question about the chipping paint. Do we know why the paint is chipping? Do we have an underlying issue happening or was it, when was the last time it was painted? Why is it chipping?
In summation, age, right, Doc, I mean, I may want to add to that. It's, from what I understand, it's just, has not been painted in a long time. It's just chipping from very high up. It's very hard to get to, so it's not something we maintain regularly because of the height. At this point, to remedy it, the reason we're getting current pricing is it has been proposed for the past few budgets, it's been chipping slowly. It has gotten worse. We will have, we now actually do have a lift. We actually purchased a lift last year, you guys approved it. So we actually have one in, in our inventory. But to get it done would actually have to be a scraping, a sanding and a painting. And if you ever looked up in the gym, it's ceilings that are really high. So the cost at the time, two years ago, was about $200,000. So we're trying to get that sharpened, get some more accurate pricing so we can then see how we can move forward and how that will be funded.
Very good. Anyone else on finance? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion on 5.2 through 5.4, please. Second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have roll call, please?
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd? It's the first three items only? Oh, somebody's on the mic, if ever.
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, we're now going to move into our curriculum area and I'm going to ask for our curriculum committee report, please.
Good evening. The curriculum committee met virtually at 5:00 on September 9th, 2021. In attendance was Mr. Delabarka, Mrs. Byrd, myself, as well as Dr. Grucio and Ms. Moss. Agenda items discussed include professional development, field trips for our special education students at the high school and the action on changes in special education programs as discussed in August. The committee was updated on summer learning enrollment and outcomes, upcoming state assessments, Chromebook distribution and implementation of strengthening Gifted and Talented Act. More discussion of this impact will be collaborated on with the teaching staff and continue to be reported out to the board. Finally, there was a discussion about investigating, creating a resolution to work with our university partners on implementing the science of reading in pre-service education.
Do you have anything to add to that, Ms. Moss?
I do not, thank you so much.
Any questions or comments on curriculum from board members? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to need a motion on 6.2 and 6.3, please.
Motion.
Second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price? Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, moving into personnel, Dr. Charlton, do you have anything for open session?
I do not, Mr. President, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments, board members, for open session? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion on 7.2 through 7.7, please.
Motion.
Second, any discussion? May I have roll call?
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Moving to policy, can we have our policy committee report, please?
Yes, thank you. Please bear with me, I don't have my glasses and my report is super long, so I apologize. The policy committee met on Thursday, September 9th. Members present were Mr. Castellano, Mr. Ireland, Mrs. Sullivan and myself, admin present were Mr. Santilli, Ms. Anaya and Dr. Grucio. And our board solicitor was also present, Ms. Alco. New business consisted of mandated Strauss ESME updates with the following policies and Board of Education approved regulations requiring approval as follows. Policy 6471 and Reg 6471, school district travel were replacements to EHT's current policy and reg and mandated by Strauss ESME. This policy and regulation saw changes to the administrative code sections that were rewritten to align with the State of New Jersey Department of Treasury Office of Management and Budget Circular. Policy 2464, gifted and talented students is also a mandated Strauss ESME alert policy. It has been updated to better align with the language of New Jersey code and the revisions include requirements regarding the accessibility and development of the gifted and talented education program, submission of an annual report to the New Jersey Department of Education, a complaint procedure for individuals who believe the district may have violated the code, notice requirements for the district's policy on gifted and talented education programs. This program, as I stated, is mandated and the policy must be adopted by the board. Policy 1648, restart and recovery plan from June 2020 will be abolished and replaced by policy 1648.11, the Road Forward COVID-19 Health and Safety from June 2021. This is the first of two readings. The new policy aligns with the Road Forward recommendations regarding safety and health protocols regarding COVID-19 for the opening of schools safely and effectively at the start of the 2021-22 school year. Policy Guide 1648.11 is mandated. Policy 1648.02, remote learning options for families will be abolished because of the new Road Forward plan. Additionally, the committee discussed the regulation, the regulation for class rank. After discussion, the administration will make recommendations related to a name change to the policy and reg as well as identifying how students will be recognized for their academic achievements. Policy 6421, purchases budgeted was also discussed by the committee. Information regarding this policy was shared, including how the policy is not required or mandated and is more restricted than the law requires. It was developed as a way for the business office and the superintendent to remain transparent with the board, whereby the board acknowledges purchases that support the daily operations of the district that were budgeted and seeks approval for those that were not. Lastly, policy 2430 and 31 will be reviewed in October. Policy 164813, school employee vaccination requirements. This is new and this is the first of two readings. This is a Strauss ESME alert policy. On August 23rd, 2021, Governor Murphy signed Executive Order 253 requiring all public school districts, charter schools, parochial school and private school employees to be fully vaccinated or submit to COVID-19 testing at a minimum of one or two times per week. Executive Order 253 shall be effective October 18th, 2021. Strauss ESME has developed Policy Guide 1648.13 to address the vaccination and testing requirements of Executive Order 253. Policy Guide 1648.13 satisfies the vaccination testing, testing policy requirement in Executive Order 253. A school district is required to comply with the provisions of EO 253. Therefore, Policy Guide 1648.13 is mandated. We had to table policy 2430, co-curricular activities and policy 2431, athletic competition. As our meeting ran till 8:40, well over our one hour limit, we are going to discuss that next month in our policy. And also, we are adding the dress code to the policy, our dress code policy to, for new discussion. And without my glasses, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job without the glasses, I would have, I couldn't have done that.
I think I missed, I think I missed one, though. Did I? Yes, thank you. You got my back over there.
Do we have any questions or comments, board members? Okay.
As for this policy with vaccination and testing for the staff, I, I, I'm hoping that our governor would recognize the fact that people that are vaccinated are still transmitting it to other people and it should not just be for staff that is not vaccinated. It, it needs to be both vaccinated and not vaccinated. And I guess we have until the 18th of October to, to hope that change is made.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. So first, I'm going to ask for a motion on 8.2 to 8.3. We need to approve those tonight.
I'll make a motion, a second.
Any discussion? And, and just to elaborate, it, it's so that we can get these new required Road Forward policies in place during the month of September. So we'll do first reading tonight, we'll do second reading next week at our regular business meeting. So any discussion on those two? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes to 8.2, no to 8.3.
Thank you. Mrs. Salagi?
Yes to 8.2, no to 8.3.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay. Now, to one of the highlights of our evening, we are going to introduce our newly hired employees, Dr. Grucio.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. It's with great pride that I be the first to introduce to you for the first time in public, the following Egg Harbor Township employees who are new to us based on the Board of Education's vote this evening. So thank you, Board of Education, and please stand Elizabeth Butler, who is a social worker at Davenport. Welcome, Brandie Shaner, art teacher, part-time at the Swift Slayball Complex. Allison McShane, a special education teacher at Alder Avenue Middle School. Inger Burnside, our data entry specialist, welcome. Lindsay Keeney, a paraprofessional with the Swift Slayball Complex. Jennifer Caiyes, a paraprofessional with the Swift Slayball Complex. Morgan Geddings, a program, a PSD program, paraprofessional at the Swift Slayball Complex. Jessica Boots, a ratio paraprofessional at the Miller School. Melinda Linville, ratio paraprofessional at the Miller School. Mr. Brian Wright, an MD program paraprofessional at the high school. And Allison Carmen, security guard at the high school. And last but not least, Mr. Tyler Gardner, who has accepted the role of the communication coordinator working out of our TV station and standing right before you. Congratulations, everyone, and welcome to Egg Harbor Township School District. At this time, if you would like to continue your evening outside of this room, you're more than welcome to exit. We won't be offended. If you'd like to stay to hear the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome. Have a great evening and thanks for attending.
Welcome, all of you. Congratulations, welcome to EHT. I think there's Tuesday night football on, so I don't blame you. All right, so we're going to move forward through the agenda. Communications, we have a new board calendar. I do see that we have to choose a committee meeting night in November. But we're going to back that up until the, the final week of October, I assume, because that is going to conflict with our election day on, on the 2nd, correct?
That's correct. The school's closed that first week of November because of election day and the conference and also where we originally, when we built the calendar last year, had that in. So we have to back it up, pushing it forward. The committees have a choice, if there's a different day they prefer. They really do have a choice there, if they want to move it to a different day. But in order for us to have an active work session and talk about things ahead of time, a committee needs to happen first.
Okay, so if you can all just take a look at your calendars, um whether that you want to look at the draft calendar or your, your private calendars or both, if we, um, so Ms. and I suggesting for us, we have strategic planning on Tuesday, October twenty-sixth. So she's uh suggesting that the committees meet on October twenty-seven or twenty-eight. Um, if that works for folks, personally, I like the twenty-eighth um so that we get a break. We get a night off, those of us who work all day, it's nice to.
Uh, Mr. President, the twenty-eighth is also a uh Greater Egg Harbor, Great Egg Harbor Historical Society program at the community center that evening on the, at seven o'clock. So I would prefer the twenty-seventh for committee meetings.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Mrs. Byrd?
Thank you. So um, October twenty-seventh, the Wednesday, it might be easier for admin to uh get the agenda out for the work session on Friday. If, if we wait till that Thursday, it might be cutting it close for them to get, it might give them just a little bit more time in an already busy um time. So I'm thinking, I'm leaning towards Wednesday, but I'm flexible either way. Yeah.
Any, any other thoughts? Okay, so do you wanna, uh, are we ready to solidify that? It seems like all, all voices are, except for me, are for the twenty-seventh. Okay, so I'm looking for a little uh um straw vote, looks good, head shake. We're gonna have, uh, we'll have Ms. and I make up our calendar. We'll reflect Wednesday, the twenty-seventh of October will be our committee meeting night, actually will be our November committee meeting night. And then, New Jersey School Boards. Mr. Delabarga, what is new and exciting in the world of New Jersey?
Always something new, Mr. Castellano.
It is. It's a thrill a minute.
Members, good evening, everyone. Uh, as president of the County Association, I have some information for you tonight. You should have all received today a message from uh New Jersey School Boards Association's executive director, Dr. Feinside, regarding their latest report that they prepared. It's on rebuilding opportunities for students. Uh, it's in his notice that you received today. If you click on the report, it's really an excellent report and includes mental health and other opportunities for, uh, ideas for helping kids on to the situation that we're living through right now. And they had a state committee prepare this report. I think they did a very nice job on it. Our, just for your information, our Atlantic County School Board meeting, which is hybrid, will be on October twentieth, which is a Wednesday evening at six o'clock, and it's at the Atlantic City Country Club. Of course, you should be receiving information about registering for that meeting shortly. The topic is the creative use of SR funding, and we did that at your suggestion, and we wanted to have it more timely for the local boards of education. And of course, our virtual workshop for New Jersey School Boards Association is at the same time where all this topic that we just discussed, October twenty-sixth through twenty-eight. But you're able to, we are registered and you'll be able to attend virtually, and there's also some nighttime programs this time. So pay attention to the, all the notifications that you receive almost every day regarding that workshop. Uh, as county president, I attended a hybrid meeting last weekend. Patrick Ireland is one of our vice presidents and uh Mr. Henry Goldsmith from Weymouth is also one of the vice presidents. And the three of us attended a hybrid county meeting in person at Medford Village Country Club, and that was on August thirty-first. And uh, it was actually a very good meeting. The uh, we were the, I think, the largest contingency there representing the Southern New Jersey uh local associations and county associations. Uh, the executive director, Dr. Feinside, was there and he shared the, the report that I just talked about of rebuilding opportunities for students and uh he, he announced that it was coming out this week. It discusses the learning gap and emotional learning, so I think you guys, all of us would be very interested in this paper. Uh, Mr. Christopher Jones, the Director of Government Relations, shared the latest uh report from the uh state level. He talked about the governor's mask and vaccine, the governor's mask and vaccinations, executive orders, and he talked about phase three of SR funding. Ray Penny from School Boards shared a video from CBS News about a recent Wayne, New Jersey Board of Education meeting. Some of you may have seen that. It took, it was about the controversy of a mask in schools. And if you would like to uh view that, he, I have the link for that and you can just contact me and I can share it with you. Uh, then the gist of the whole meeting was how the county associations are going to run hybrid meetings. So we were very glad that we were there because we were trained that evening on all the details of how you run a hybrid meeting, and I'm not going to share that with you tonight, but when you come to the county meeting on October twentieth, maybe you'll see a, a good performance on, on our part. I'm sure Patrick and Mr. Goldsmith will give me some suggestions when I mess up somewhere along the evening. But I think the key point for me will be to stay in front of the microphone, which is a tie, because the cameras on that spot the whole time, which I think is really interesting. But they have, what was it, three cameras and three microphones and all kinds of things that they're working out. The purpose of these local meet, uh, the state meeting with the different parts of New Jersey, they had a north meeting, they had a central, and we were the southern meeting, was to have the county officers understand how their hybrid meetings ought to be run. So some, that evening, most of the people in attendance were actually virtual. The in-person was, was sixteen of us, I think, virtually there, and the rest of the meeting, there were about forty or fifty people there, were virtual. So we have to understand how we run a successful virtual meeting, and we were trained that evening on how to do that. So that was just the gist of that whole meeting, and uh it was a pleasure to attend, and I'm very honored to have the opportunity to serve the county in this role. A part of that was, I was given a call from Dr. Feinside about two weeks ago, and the state president, Irene LaFavor, has appointed me, this is really interesting, as a member of the School Boards Association Ethics Committee for the following year. Now, that's a, it's a nice job because I asked, how many meetings will I have to attend? And he said, well, they haven't had a meeting in four years because they have very few complaints against you. If this is just for school board, the state board members, if there's a concern with their situation, so it's more, a lot more limited than it sounds, but I was pleased to be appointed, even they thought of me, that's nice. It just shows that those of us here in Atlantic County are being recognized, but at the state level, I think that's a good thing for the county. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Delabarga, and I'll just, just follow up. The New Jersey School Boards Association Legislative Committee will meet this Saturday morning. Uh, I'll be attending, Mrs. Byrd and uh Mr. Ireland as well. And uh, one final thought, um, I want to thank Mr. Delabarga for highlighting all the training that's available as well as the workshop. Remember, one of our board goals is for board members to attain training certification. It's a very important goal, so uh please take advantage. It, it's easier now to, to get training than it ever was with all of the virtual uh offerings. Okay, so now with uh all that being said, we're going to move to our uh public comment. We're back fully in person uh this evening, and so uh we'll ask those who wish to comment to please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Um, just as a reminder, um, public comment is three minutes uh for each person. Um, we, we cannot discuss personnel or litigation, uh, and if it turns out that a question is very complicated, it may be that someone from our office, uh, one of our uh administration members will need to get back to you with a full answer. So with that, uh, the floor is open. Please come forward. Right here, we'll make sure these mics are on and working.
Are we good?
You have to push the mic.
There we go. All right, uh, name, Dominic Puglisi, twenty-eight Shoreline Road. I'm the father of a high schooler, third grader and kindergartner. So just to start, I want to say good evening, and I want to start by saying thank you to Dr. Gruccio for meeting with my wife and I earlier this morning, going over a lot of what I'm going to bring up right now. Decided to come tonight, even though we met earlier, so that the frustrations and discussions we had earlier could be brought to a larger audience for awareness. I'll try to touch on just a few of these with the time permitting. Not sure how many people have thoroughly read Executive Order two fifty-one that governs a lot of the direction regarding the implementation of masks inside schools, but the first line item reads as follows. All public, private, parochial preschool programs in elementary and secondary schools, including charter and Renaissance schools, must maintain a policy regarding mandatory use of face masks by staff, students and visitors in the indoor portion of the school district premises, except in the following circumstances, and it follows with eight bullet points, which I'm not going to delve into all of them. When you view the E H T School District website, slide presentations and other media, the word "policy" is omitted, and it claims that the order reads as "masker mandatory." I asked for specifically where in the order it stated, and I was told it's, it's in there. The order reads that a policy regarding mandatory use of face masks must be maintained, which is vastly different than the way E H T is interpreting it. This is why other schools within our district, example, Atlantic Christian, as well as other school districts, are able to have a more flexible mask policy for the students because that's how they developed it. Our policy regarding mandatory use of masks could read that masks are mandatory where social distancing can't be practiced, or when navigating through hallways or anything similar, and still meet the mandate set forth by the governor. Expanding on this, E H T has decided to implement desk and table shields in some classrooms as Dr. Gruccio brought up earlier. Excuse me. When you read the road forward on the E H T School District website, it gives guidance into when desk shields would be used, when the class size is over twenty, and when social distancing of three feet can't be enforced. If you look at some of the classes, my third grader, for example, they have social distancing over three feet between a desk, and yet the shields are still present. When I asked about this earlier, I was told it could be up to the discretion of the teacher as well, if they felt they wanted it. There's no guidance in the executive order, really anywhere, regarding the implementation of desk shields within a classroom, and I got concurrence on this from the assistant superintendents during our meeting. E H T took it upon themselves to implement this, and there's no consistency amongst the schools with my kindergartner not having it and my third grader having them. We don't need to do this per the executive order and the other directive. Mask breaks are one area of contention as well that was brought up, but no consistency between classrooms. Current recommendations for a child to raise their hand, essentially interrupting class to request a mask break, which may or may not be given, or they'll be asked to leave the classroom to take one. I feel this is an area that could give some additional attention to, maybe implement something like X amount of minutes per hour of instruction or something similar to alleviate the added burden of a child having to draw attention to his or herself and potentially put them in an uncomfortable position. I was going to address some items on the water fountains, which we discussed earlier, but Dr. Gruccio gave some insight that they would be reopening, which is great to hear. Lastly, I do want to address the bus um situation that came up as that was our neighborhood that received uh the phone call from transportation, said seventy students, um, twelve of which were in a preschool, so that leaves fifty-eight K through three on a fifty-three person bus. Um, I know it was said that a substitute bus driver was present. However, my children were the ones involved in that, and they did not know the little girl that could not find a seat. So while I appreciate what's being done, I think some extra attention towards the bus and the safety of the students would be great. Uh, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna, there, there's a lot there. Uh, I'm going to defer over to both Dr. Gruccio and um to Ms. Halkelco to touch on that. That's, um, so the, the mask, the executive order is very clear, um, and I'm just, I'm just going to let Dr. Gruccio as well as Ms. Halkelco um respond to the various items raised.
As Mr. Puglisi stated, I did cover um those items in my opening. I believe more clarification is needed from Mrs. Halkelco regarding the executive order. Perhaps you can explain it in a different way and then um I'll answer the bus, clarify the bus situation.
I would just say in regards to the executive order, the executive order is clear in that it does say the district has to have a policy, but that policy is for mandatory mask use, and that is for staff, students and visitors in the indoor portion of the school district, and it only accepts out for very limited circumstances. Those have been shared, I know, by the district previously, but that is if someone's health is at stake, if they have trouble breathing, if they have a documented medical condition, and for all of those instances, that person has to provide a doctor's note to the school district, provide, answer a form as well by their doctor, and then our school doctor looks at it to determine if there's an exemption. In addition, there's also an exemption if someone is under the age of two, if someone is engaged in an activity that cannot physically be performed while wearing a mask, such as eating or drinking, which Dr. Gruccio did explain tonight, playing a musical instrument that would be obstructed by a face mask, or if an individual is engaged in a high-intensity aerobic or anaerobic activity, or when a student is participating in a high-intensity physical activity during a physical education class in a well-ventilated location and able to maintain physical distance of six feet from all other individuals, or when wearing a face mask creates an unsafe condition in which to operate equipment or execute a task. That's it. Those are the limited exceptions that the executive order provides. Dr. Gruccio, did you want to add anything?
Um, no, thank you. That's um what we're following. Regarding the bus situation of fifty-eight students, I'll clarify again. We had five buses going into the community to be more effective and efficient. We, there are seventy students, um, some are preschool, some aren't taking the bus. We are down to fifty-eight students. Two buses will bring fifty-eight students to our schools. Am I correct in saying that? Yes.
He said yes, then he looked away. I didn't know if he wanted affirmation. There are two buses in that community at this time, yes. Even with moving in, I want to be very clear, there were never fifty-eight scheduled to be on a fifty-four passenger bus. There were seats for every student. We pulled video, there were seats, yes, factually. There were four small children on one thirty-six inch seat. They were not hanging over, it's not okay. There's a substitute bus driver did not adhere to the seating chart. However, in the same video, there were seats with just two on a thirty-six inch seat. So there were seats for them. I don't know how it ended up with four-on-one with a substitute driver. They're small, maybe the driver couldn't see their heads. Since then, the sub-driver has been spoken to and it has been remedied. But I want to make sure everybody understands, we do not overbook buses, that's just not what happens. Thank you.
And uh if there's, if we just would like to reiterate what we're doing with the desk shields?
Desk shields are in place in classrooms um where there's twenty or more students. Desk shields are in place where we cannot social distance three feet. Desk shields are in place um at teachers' requests. Desk shields are in place in cafeterias where students are um gathering, eating for up to thirty minutes, and I'll need to take off their masks to eat their food.
For the safety of our students and staff. Okay. Anyone else, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Dawn Bird, Sycamore Ave, Egg Harbor Township, New Jersey.
I'm sorry, if you could use a microphone, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, is it Dawn? Dawn Bird, Sycamore Ave, Egg Harbor Township, New Jersey. And I just wanted to ask about homeschooled middle schoolers playing in sports. I was a little confused as to what the policy is. I called the school, um, the school nurse said surely it would not be legal to not allow my daughter to play sports. I spoke with um coaches, guidance counselors, everyone was like, yeah, she just filled out the paperwork, she was all registered to go. Yesterday at two o'clock, right before the soccer tryouts, I was called and said, whoops, sorry, we were all mistaken, she can't come. So obviously, I had a very upset little girl. So I'm just wondering, even the high school guidance counselors are like, what? How is that possible? It's allowed to happen here, why is there disconnect through the middle school? So I was told it's being worked on. So I was just wondering, is it being worked on? Is there a plan? Is there a date? Is there something I can do to make this happen if I don't have to, if she doesn't have to take transportation? Is there a way to get something going?
I can answer that with um very simply. So when we put the policy in place, um, it was, at the time, it was um at the request of high school parents, and prior to that, it was several years ago now. So we put it in place as a trial, and we do, we do believe that homeschoolers should participate in our activities. Uh, we wrote it as a trial just for high school students at the time because that was, uh, we only had interest from two high, two high school families um at our- At our last regular meeting, we had someone make the request that we extend it to middle school, which our policy committee is in the process of doing. We looked at it last meeting, and our administration is looking to make sure that there aren't any other roadblocks that we're not familiar with, and making sure that everything is good to go, and we do want to extend it down to include middle school. It's just where, you know, where we are in the school year, if we had gotten the request this spring, we could have altered the policy over the summer and had it in place for the fall. So we're gonna get it changed as quickly as we're able to do that. Does anything, Mrs. Byrd, you'd like to add?
I would just like to add that hopefully in the future, when questions like this come at the school level, that it's brought to the right people so that the question can be answered correctly, so that we don't have students who are let down.
So for my sake, who should I have asked? You know what I mean? Is that what you're saying? Like, I should have asked somebody different?
No, no. We have policies in place, and if there's questions, then there's a chain of command that staff members go through to make sure that the answers that are given out, and I don't want to overstep my role here, but I apologize that that happened to you, for your child, because the last thing any of us want ever is to disappoint a child.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Is there like a goal date or not right now? It's just you guys are working on it, like as soon as?
There's, there's no reason, you know, unless there's some issue that presents itself, we should be able to approve it at our October meeting, and then these activities will be open to middle schoolers.
Awesome. That's awesome. Thank you so much, everyone.
Yes.
So I just have a question for that policy, since it's been brought up. Can we, administration, look at exception to policy possibly for individuals that already put their paperwork in, got to the very last step, and then at the very last step told no? Is there an exception to policy from administration possibly?
That's a good question, because like in October, her season will have already, you know, already played out. It's not like she can try out then.
All right, so let's, okay, so, and I appreciate that, but let's try not to be, you know, sort of yelling, we want to keep, you know, that's okay. And I don't want to put, I don't want to put administration on, you know, on the spot. We were not aware that there was an interest in this at the middle school level until just very, very recently, at our last meeting, and we put it on our policy, our very next policy committee to get the process moving, to change the policy to allow it to happen. We moved as quick as we could. As I said, if someone had approached us, you know, earlier that there was an interest at the middle school level, we would have moved to make the change sooner. We want to make it happen. So, you know, let me go to Mrs. Sullivan.
I'm wondering if we can cover, I think we have a couple more bases to touch on that. I was just a visitor at the policy meeting, and we didn't get to this policy. If we can get some clarity from administration this week, would any of the board members be opposed to putting it on next week and getting it approved?
I know Mr. Santilli facilitated the policy meeting, and we were taking it into consideration. We have some i's to dot and t's to cross, and it would be communicating with the administration of the middle school. So once that's done, I'm not opposed to bringing it to the board, once we have all the i's dotted and t's crossed. But out of courtesy to the administration, I'd like for that conversation to occur first.
Okay. So everybody good with that? As soon as we can make that happen, we'll make that happen. You know, I just wish that, I wish we had known the district, and a lot of districts don't allow it, but we were approached several years ago, again, by high school parents, and we made the change because we thought it was the right thing to do. We just limited the high school again because there was only interest at the high school level. We want to try it out and see how it worked. Seems to have worked very well, from all that I know. So, you know, I think we came up against the very, it coming to us at the very, very end of the summer, beginning of school year, and we all, we got, we got jammed up. So, you know, we're gonna get it, we're gonna get it done as quickly as we can, you know, through the proper channels. And I, you know, normally, we don't do board members, but I'm gonna, we normally wait for board member comment, but I'll go ahead and let Mrs. Byrd as policy chair.
Thank you. And I do just want to reiterate that, like I said, our policy committee meeting did run almost 40 minutes over, and from my report, you know, we had a lot of mandated things because of COVID and, you know, to deal with. We definitely discussed that policy. It's on our radar for sure, but we did direct administration, we asked them to please gather the information because there are factors involved, and we can't just make knee-jerk reactions. So we didn't, we didn't say, oh, we'll deal with it later, for sure. It was more, we came up with a plan as quickly as we could so that we could deal with it. So please, no, that is something we're taking seriously. We want to provide opportunities to our community members, whether they're homeschooled or in, you know, in more of a traditional setting. So please understand. And had we not had so many other policies to deal with that were mandated, that we had no choice of, we would have had the time and had a better answer for you sooner. So we, we're doing our best to get it all, to fit it all in in limited time. Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments from the audience? Yes, please.
Hi, Regina Bonjorno, 405 Starfish Lane. As far as the mask breaks go, there's definitely a discrepancy amongst all the schools. I guess what the policy reads is that we're trying to allow the children to take the mask breaks as needed. I would like to see if we could do something more uniformed, as far as having, like the gentleman said before me, like five minutes in every class. To have a child raise their hand and interrupt a class during maybe the teacher is doing a lesson, to say that they need a mask break seems like it would interrupt the day, or the teacher, or the teacher might feel like she has a lot to cover, he or she might have a lot to cover, and is unable to get to a mask break. So I know that some children go all day with really no mask break other than lunch, and if they're not eating their lunch, then they're sitting there still with their masks on, and that just seems like we do need to, we need, as adults, need mask breaks. So I feel like if we could have more of a uniform across the district, every principal, every administration, put it out to every teacher so that everyone's kind of on the same page. And as far as the high intensity, I know as far as working out, if your heart rate is going up, that's high intensity. And what might be high intensity for me is not high intensity for someone else. How can a gym teacher direct that in a gym class, and when they're playing inside this gym where they can social distance over six feet, why would they be required to keep their masks on, regardless if they're only doing jumping jacks or playing volleyball? Because we have rainy days, we're getting a colder weather, the kids are going to be in school, in the gym, wearing masks, and might not be getting the exercise that they need because we're trying to keep the masks on them. So if we can separate them and remove the masks for that period and allow them to work out and do the activity, I don't see any harm in that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna let Dr. Gruccio speak to the mask. We obviously want to be as flexible as we possibly can with our breaks, and I'll let Dr. Gruccio take it.
I believe we've been very flexible with the mask breaks, just like with bathroom breaks. If a child needs one, even if it's as simple to step out, you know, teachers have even told students that, you know, even after raising their hand, they just need a break, you know, some classes, that's how it's being handled. Other teachers are taking them to certain areas, and this seems to be working well. In terms of a child going through a whole day without a mask break, I don't know why that occurred, because anyone who needs one should take one. What was the other question? In terms of the high-intensity activity, if we can maintain six feet social distance in that area, you know, we said it's okay to take the mask off. Right now, a lot of our activities are outside, and they don't have the mask on. I'm gonna call on Ms. Moss, because she's been in the schools as well and has worked on researching mask breaks and asking teachers and principals what's going on. Do you have a comment? If you don't, did I cover it? That's fine, I won't put you on the spot, but if you felt I covered it, based on the research we looked into over the last couple days, I know you've been looking into it.
No, I think you covered it, and we appreciate the comments, and we will continue to have these discussions to ensure that all students are receiving mask breaks, and we address the phys ed and the separation with the six feet for that as well. So we're continuing to work through this to, again, keep us, everyone in school in the health and safety and make sure that it is equitable across the board.
Okay, very good. Anyone else?
Kathy Wazin, President of the Ed Harbor Township Education Association. I want to speak on behalf of the staff. We appreciate the mandate from the governor. We are concerned about our health, as well as we are concerned about our students' health. As far as the petitions, the barriers, the teacher has to remain safe in that classroom, especially on the elementary level. These children are not vaccinated. So it's also for the safety of the teacher. So she's healthy, he's healthy, and he can come in, and she can come in every day and teach these children. So I just want to keep this prevalent, that this is all for the safety of our students and our staff. And even though we're frustrated and overwhelmed with having to wear these masks and have the shields, it's not to punish anybody, it's to keep us safe. I just want to speak to mask breaks. I walk the hallways, I talk to teachers all the time. I see kids taking breaks, they take breaks, they make sure their students get a break. You know, I think it's time that we stop the name-calling and the pointing out and start working together through this pandemic so we can be finished with it. The more we complain about masks and barriers being put up, the more this pandemic is going to go on. So I appreciate the parents' comments tonight, but I have to stand here for the staff and their protection as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wazin.
Thank you, Mrs. Wazin. I couldn't have said it better myself. Appreciate that.
Anyone else, please?
All right. Start us Santiago, 3 Golden Court. In caveat to what she said, I don't agree with masks. I've already made that clear in the last meeting. Second is the policy of wearing masks in gym when they're doing high-intensity or anaerobic activity, high burst intensity. I don't know about any of you guys, if you've played volleyball recently, and whether or not you feel it's high intensity. Yoga, maybe low intensity. All right, we'll go with that. But to make our children wear masks indoors while performing high-intensity activities or anaerobic activities is against the policy. It's included in the exclusion, and with you guys violating that, you guys are going to call attention to the school board, and you're going to call attention to litigation. So with that being said, that's number one. Number two, it should not be the students' responsibility to make sure that the teachers are healthy. It is the teachers' responsibility to make sure that they are healthy. They have a school board who are protecting them. It is the parents' responsibility to protect the students, and at this point, it's not uniform. You have one school who doesn't have air conditioning in their gym, Fernwood. You have another school, Alder, who says they don't have air conditioning in their gym, and they're still making their students wear masks. That's against one of the other exclusions, which is ventilation. Circulating air that's already contaminated with COVID, quote-unquote, is not the same as ventilation, especially if you have no clean air coming in. So with that being said, like you guys are just only following the directives and the exclusions that you feel like following. And that being said, it's not part of the EO. You're not following it to the letter of the law. You're not even following it to the spirit of the law at this point. So with that being said, I do think that we need to really uniform it in the school bus situation, because I can attest to that. There were kids sitting on the floor on the school bus, on my student, my child's school bus, and I don't know what community he lives in, but that wasn't just one school bus, and that wasn't just one community. That was my community too. So, good luck.
Well, before I turn it over to Dr. Gruccio and to Ms. Hal Kalco, I'll just tell you flat out, we're following the executive order, and we're following the policies. Yes, we are.
So we've already gone over what the executive order requires with exceptions. I believe that is what the district is following, and I believe Dr. Gruccio has said that she continues and will continue to go over with staff to make sure that they clearly understand those expectations.
Anything, Doc?
As far as school buses, we've addressed that, the situations. Anyone that's bringing to our attention, Sean Johnson, if you had any more specific information, because you oversee the Transportation Department, and whenever I get an email or a phone call, I send it to you and Ms. Fisher to look into it, in terms of kids sitting on the floor over crowded buses. I know you have information on that.
If it's the same bus that was circulating Facebook, it was not true. However, I will follow up with your students' bus specifically and follow up with you tomorrow personally. Thank you.
Anyone else, please?
Eric New, High School Drive. Can you hear me all right?
If you could hit the microphone, please.
Eric Newcomer, High School Drive. Can you hear me okay? I'm just curious as to the testing policy for teachers, weekly or biweekly? We're in a very deadly pandemic here, highly contagious, new strands are coming out. We're only testing the faculty weekly or biweekly, or the students as well? I'm just trying to follow the logic. Should we not be testing every single student weekly or twice a week? I'm just trying to follow the logic behind that. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Again, we're following our executive order. I'm gonna let Ms. Hal Kalco just go through that again.
Sure. Under Executive Order 253, the district is required to test weekly or biweekly unvaccinated staff starting October 18th. The district, like many districts, received a survey from the state of New Jersey. From that survey, we'll get information as to how the testing will be implemented through the state of New Jersey. Once we have that information, we'll be able to share it with the Board of Education and the public as to that policy.
Very good.
I just want to clarify, right now, that policy is only for staff members, though.
Anyone else? Public comment, questions or comments? Yes?
Regina Bonjorno, 405 Starfish Lane. Sorry, I didn't want to have a back and forth.
If you can please use a microphone, thank you.
Regina?
Oh, sorry. Regina Bonjorno, 405 Starfish Lane. I didn't want to have a back and forth. So as far as the masks in gym, again, we're going back and forth on this topic. My son was in gym class with a volleyball during the other day when it was raining, playing volleyball with a mask on, and I feel with a gym class that, I'm pretty sure the last time I was in a gym, it's pretty big, and we can space out. If we're making our children wear masks when they're spaced out, and there's no ventilation, I know personally, I wouldn't give my all. I wouldn't want to work out with a mask on. So I'm just trying to figure out, where can we compromise? Where can we find that barrier here to like make it a little bit more possible to have an activity in school? We're allowed to social distance without our masks on, right? Like if the teachers can't go outside, they're able to go to the auditorium or to the cafeteria or in the hallway, spaced out and take off their masks. So why wouldn't they be able to do that in gym and remove their masks? And I know that you may be checking into it and checking with the teachers and principals, but I spoke with the gym teacher last night during back-to-school night and asked that... and asked that question as well. And she said that she's been directed to follow the executive order. So, it just seems like we're missing pieces of the puzzle here. Like some people are interpreting one way. They're doing, you know, being extra cautious, which I understand. I don't knock it at all. Everyone wants to be safe. That's the agenda here. But we have to have common sense. And if the executive order has an exemption in there, I think we should be using it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Doc?
Yeah, as I stated before, we will continue to look into it and specifically the Fernwood Avenue physical education situation. I mean, some, you know, classes have 40 kids, some have 80, some have 100. I, you know, I have to look at the specific situation and we'll bring clarity, give clarity to the order, to the principals and the supervisor of health and phys ed.
Very good. Okay, anyone else? I'm going to go to then board members. Anything? Questions, comments? Mr. Ireland?
So, thank you for everybody coming out. I agree with a gentleman that spoke up earlier during public session about the testing requirements for the staff or students. But that is directly what we have from the executive order. It doesn't make sense that we're only testing teachers or, or our staff that are only non-vaccinated because people can carry if you are vaccinated. So, but unfortunately, I believe that is the only part of the executive order. If I'm mistaken on that, Ms. Hal Kalco, I believe that is what the guidance that we got, even though it doesn't make sense to myself.
The executive order is specifically for staff in regards to whether they're vaccinated or not vaccinated.
Any other board members?
I have a comment. Mr. Price.
Go ahead, Mr. Price.
When we get into testing and so on and so forth and vaccinations, it's going to be required for the employees to either be vaccinated or be tested. That's covered, you know, with funds. But the other thing would be if we did test everybody, including kids and everything, who would fund that and who would pay for that? And that's, that's something that we would need to, you know, take into consideration as well and how you would implement something like that. And what the, what the CARES funding or the state in this case, which is recommending a couple of options, I mean, is that something that they would fund? At this point, I don't think they would because they're only going to fund what the executive order specifically says, as far as I know. But that's just what I wanted to comment on.
Any other board members? Okay, see, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
I am thankful that, you know, we did have people, parents come out, teachers, staff members come out tonight to express their opinions and concerns. And there was a lot of information that was shared that I think some of it we've heard before, some of it's new. But I definitely wanted to say the fact, I, I'm glad that we're back in school. Five days in-person instruction for the health and social emotional well-being of our students. I think we could start there by saying that that was a task and a feat that was accomplished. And I think that's great for the children. And along with that, of course, it comes with the different, you know, first, we weren't in school and, you know, everyone went to school over five days a week and we got there. And we can't be over five days a week without some type of precautions put in place because we are still in a pandemic. Whether some people think a pandemic is real or not, we're still in a pandemic with different variants of COVID running rampant. And I think that the one thing I did hear a lot about was mask breaks and discussing having a universal mask break within the schools. Our district is K to 12. So, a universal mask break is kind of like telling the kids, you know, people say, don't tell, you can't tell my kid when they need to use the bathroom. Sometimes each child may not need a mask break at the same time, right? So, I think the way that you have it with the, you know, in the classrooms, making sure that these children are provided that opportunity. And I can say that when Ms. Wazin spoke about the fact that, that, you know, the teachers, I don't know of teachers that would, would deny a child a mask break or, you know, say, hey, listen, you know, tough it out and they will give the child the mask break. I think that's one, one plus. And Ms. Bonjorno said some, two things tonight that I thought, comments that I thought really fit with the situation that we're in. And one word she used was interpretation. And the other one was common sense. And I think if, they're, they're great things, but I think interpretation is the reason why. Ms. Wazin stated that, you know, we're here pointing, you know, sometimes we point fingers and what we need to be doing is using common sense and working together. We're very thankful that our kids are back in school and we have to work through the different executive orders. And I think, you know, at the end of this meeting tomorrow, the next day, I think we're still going to have people with differing opinions, interpretations, and what their idea of what common sense looks like because we view it from our lens and our life experiences. Your interpretation of something, your idea of common sense or whoever's, it's going to be totally different because we've all had different experiences. But the bottom line is that our children are back in school and we do have to consider the safety and health and well-being of the staff and the students. And I think that we just need to look at it from, from that venue. And like Ms. Wazin just said, more of a collaborative effort because we're going to have to agree to disagree. That's really going to be the bottom line. And I always say, you know, we're our children's first teachers. So, we teach our children how to behave by the way we behave too. So, just keep that in mind when you come out. And I am glad that, to see that people expressed their opinions and gave their comments in such a respectful manner. So, that was pleasant to hear. Because like I said, we can agree to disagree, but your delivery was, was much better than some previous meetings. So, I appreciate that. And that's all.
Thank you. Any other board members? Mrs. Sullivan?
My personal opinion doesn't affect anybody on the board. We all have our own personal opinions as well as the community has their personal opinions. I really want to commend our district with being forerunners. Our administration has done everything to the letter that they can to protect the students and the staff with this pandemic. But to tell you the truth, following the science doesn't really answer it because we have people that have the vaccine that are getting COVID. It doesn't change anything getting the vaccine as in school because we could have 100% vaccine employees and they're all going to still have to wear masks. They're still going to have to socially distance. So, right at this point, our staff is doing the best they can. Our administrators, I really have to commend. But according to the guidelines we have right now, there's just no answer to this thing. There's no common sense answer to all of it because you have people that are vaccinated and infecting others. You have others that don't have vaccines and they've never gotten sick. And then you have all the students, nobody under 12. So, that's a whole population that we're dealing with that is never, well, I shouldn't say never, that is not in the foreseeable future going to be taking these vaccines. So, I think we all just need to be patient, work with our administrators and our, our staff and just do the best we can. That's all we can say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, please.
Mrs. Bird?
You make such good points, Mrs. Sullivan. I think that that's why we call this a pandemic because the rate of spread is greater than how we can, you know, keep people safe. That's why it's a pandemic. That's why we have to take these added steps of making sure that our ventilation systems are safe, that we're wearing masks properly, that we're socially distancing, that we have dividers in our classrooms, that when we're outside of school, we're encouraging the social distancing. We're not going to large groups. It's not because of what we believe. It's not because science isn't working. It isn't because of common sense. It's because we are in a pandemic. And to fight the pandemic, we're using the resources we have. And we're following the rules and the rules are changing every day and it's exhausting. But we have to do our best and hopefully prevent, as uncomfortable as a mask is, a ventilator is way more uncomfortable. So, we have to just continue to do our best and look out for each other and hope and pray that we can get back to normal and take these masks off at some point. But we're not there yet because we're still in this pandemic, unfortunately.
Anyone else? Board members? Any other comments? Administration? All right, so, a very good meeting. Thank you all for coming out. As Mrs. Gilbert Floyd said, thank you for the polite comments. Very much appreciate it all. Welcome back. We'll see you next Tuesday for our business meeting, our September business meeting. So, have a great evening and I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.